This time, I would like to ask everyone if they would please stand and observe a moment of prayer. Thank you. Before I ask the clerk to call roll, I'll point out this is the last meeting that we expect her in session with us. And I want to say Pam, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity I've had to work with you for the last couple of years and look forward to the next couple of months as well. But I just couldn't let the moment go without at least acknowledging where we are. So if you'll please call the rolls.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Daughtry.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Miller.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum present. Before we go on with the additions and deletions and maybe changes to the agenda, I'd like to also point out that this is Mayor Pro Tim, Richard Joyner's, last meeting as Mayor Pro Tim. I want to thank you for your year of service. I think it's been an outstanding pleasure of mine and honor to work with you during that period. So, thank you. All right. So with that, I'll ask if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda. I have had a request that we move item number 26 up on the agenda to be discussed right after item number seven, which are petitions for the public. Now, item number 26 is consideration for the community land trust. Are there any other additions or deletions or requests?
I don't think that this is an agenda item that needs to be added, but I have been asked by the neighborhood presidents to ask for a status update on the petition that they all signed asking for reduction in speed limits. I just won't be sure that we get that on our list of things to address tonight.
Absolutely. You want to add that formally to the agenda?
If that's what it takes, yes, sir.
I don't know that it does, but let's go and make it official. So, petition. Can you handle that perhaps in the, in your community update?
I can't because I would have to ask several people. I wasn't prepared for that, so I'd have to ask others in the audience to address it.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. And I was asked tonight to bring that up again because it's been quite some time since that petition was presented. I think it was to be followed up on and we haven't heard anything. Thank you.
So Councilperson Miller, would it be acceptable to add it to the agenda for the next time with the full brief?
Yes, but they want action.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay. So as I said, entertain a motion to move item 26 to just behind item seven, the community land trust. Motion made by Councilman Walker is our second. Second by Councilman Joyner. Is there any for discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. The agenda has been amended. All right, at this time, I would like to go to item number four, which is consideration of the minutes of the regular scheduled city council meeting, which was held on October 25th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion made by Councilman Joyner.
Second.
Second by Councilman Daughtry. Is there any for discussion? Hearing not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Agenda minutes are approved. Brings us to item number five, which is the community update. This time I will turn over to the meeting to City Manager Rochelle D. Smallton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as well as those who are seated in the chamber and observing. Good evening. I'd like to begin my report by sharing our holiday closure schedule. City facilities will be closed Friday, December 24th, and Monday, December 27th, in observance of Christmas. City facilities will be closed Monday, January 3rd, 2022, in observance of the New Year's holiday. Tar River Transit will not operate December 24th or 25th, as well as January 1st and January 3rd. Despite our closings, I am to report that residential garbage, recycling, and yard waste will not be affected by the holiday schedule and will operate as normal. I'm pleased to share that we are offering downtown holiday shuttles through New Year's Day. Shuttles will run Thursdays through Saturdays from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. and Sunday from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. between Rocky Mount Mills and Station Square. A map of the shuttle route is available on the front page of our website, rockymountnc.gov. Residents, please note that our Business and Collection Services Department is currently experiencing higher than normal call volumes. This increase can be attributed to our seasonal shift, pandemic assistance programs, and other customer account inquiries. Hold times might exceed 45 minutes or more. That's a very long time we'll need to talk about. We'll need to discuss that a bit. But you will be repositioned in line if you hang up and try your call again. We appreciate your patience in advance and look forward to serving you. Please take note of our upcoming Martin Luther King Jr. events, which include our oratorical competition scheduled for 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, January 8th, at the Imperial Center for the Arts and Sciences. Participants must attend a Nash County school, live in the city limits of Rocky Mount, or attend a school in the city limits of Rocky Mount. The speech topic for middle school students is "The Power of One." While we do, we go, where, I'm sorry, where do we go from here? Chaos or Community is the subject matter for high school students. Call 972-1180 for more information. Finally, please mark your calendar for Monday, January 17th, at 7:00 a.m. as the Rocky Mount Event Center will be the home of the MLK Junior Unity Breakfast, where we will be joined by keynote speaker Jim Goodman of Capital Broadcasting, as well as the winners of the oratorical competition. Again, you may call 972-1180 for more information. On behalf of the City of Rocky Mount, I wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for manager? Yes, Councilman Daughtry.
Yes, Madam Manager, thanks for the update. On the 45-minute wait, I understand we might be talking about that. But do we have the ability to provide a callback number so we can leave a number and staff can call back?
Yeah, I'm going to look into that a little bit further and get some information out about that. The 45 minutes seems like a very, very long time, and I think people would appreciate having the ability to call back, to leave a number and have that call back.
Right, that, yeah, that would lessen the blow a little bit.
I think so. And the frustration too, probably.
Correct. The much-talked-about bill of 473 is now law, and it goes into effect January 1st, is my understanding. And I guess, Madam Manager, you know, I think we as a city council need to provide you and the city attorney, whatever boards we serve on, and I think we need to probably get a reading from our city attorney and hopefully, in conjunction with the school of government, to advise us on what we can and can't do because it's been a bill talked about, but it is law, and my understanding is January 1st when it goes into effect. And today I went online, found out a summary of the bill, and it even goes as far as saying, I think contracts that we have might have to be voided, and then we have to review those contracts. And so I would like for the attorney to look into that, and if it goes into effect January 1st, we may need a special call meeting prior to our next meeting, I would imagine, because our next meeting is canceled, I believe.
That's correct. The next meeting, I think, is January 11th, I believe.
I'm not sure.
Somewhere along.
It's on my calendar somewhere. So I don't know how to proceed with that, but I think it would be prudent if we all sent you information about, so you and the city attorney can assess everything.
Anybody else? Okay. That brings us to a presentation of the Robert Woods Johnson Award. Manager, I guess somebody's.
Ms. Kiana Walston is coming forward to make the presentation of both a flag, as well as a plaque that the city received. And I will say that that flag will most likely be flown directly under the Rocky Mount flag that's out front in City Hall.
Awesome.
Yeah. Unless someone else has a different idea.
All right. While Mark is positioning everyone, just want to say a few words. A few weeks ago, we announced that we were recognized as one of 10 national winners for the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation Culture of Health Prize. We would like to thank the community for helping us advance health, equity, and opportunities. We could not have done this without a wonderful group of community partners, and at this time, we will line up for the picture. Thank you.
Two shot. I'm going to plug him. We got three, two, and one more. Three, two. Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to item number seven on our agenda, which are petitions to be received from the public. The public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. City council values all citizen input, and this is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that the sign-in sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. If an organized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments in regard to an item that is a subject of a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. City council's request is please adhere to the following guidelines. Complete a sign-in sheet. Address comments to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. Speak through the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. And personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you will be asked to sit down or remove from the meeting. Keep comments to three minutes. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Tom Harris to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Tom Harris, and I live at 801 Joshua Clay Drive. I'm Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Madam Manager, Madam Casey, and we certainly going to miss you as you foresee other opportunities, I guess, and City Attorney. There was some good news that we heard today in the committee of the whole meeting, and I would like to just extend a big shout-out to Chief Hassel for what he is doing and what the police department is doing. The statistics continue a downward trend, and that is obviously great news. As Councilman Knight said, we need to promote the good things that are happening and try to leverage how we are doing things here in Rocky Mount. I would like to ask, maybe in the January mailer of the utilities bills, that instruction sheet or brochure be sent because people are going to download this, this item. There's a lot of information about what and how to download various features of it. It might be good if we send out some informative information to all of our residents. What I'd like to speak tonight is something that is a big concern, and that is the continued turnover of our staff here at the City of Rocky Mount. Over the years, we have lost key department personnel. We have lost other key people, and we have got to put things in place to try to keep key people from leaving the City of Rocky Mount. A lot of people have a file cabinet of knowledge up here in their head, and they're walking out. And it's hard to replace 10, 15, 20 years of service with someone new coming in to the City of Rocky Mount. And I just ask that you take a look at how can we improve things? Is there, are there exit interviews being conducted? We just need to get a handle on the root cause of why we are having staff turnover here at the City of Rocky Mount. Thank you, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to all of you.
Thank you, sir. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Max Avent to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Max Avent, Havercham Court. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam Manager. As a member of the Workforce Housing Commission and a Realtor experienced on a daily basis the challenges of workforce and affordable housing, I'm excited about the community land trust by Dr. Jim Johnson. This CLT is a multi-pronged approach to address issues that are crucial to improving our, improving and they are crucial to sustaining our workforce housing. It is inclusive in all areas. It addresses the childcare needs. It advances childcare to child development. It assists our childcare providers with a broader knowledge of business operations. It increases wages for staffs and teachers who are in a desperate need of pay raises. It broadens the staff skill set. It gives our children, our children will be better equipped as they enter to higher grade levels. It gives our area companies a better qualified workforce. Ultimately, it makes our city a better place to live, work, and play. And while I have bullet points some of these things here, this list is not exhausted. It will benefit us just about in every area of our life in this city. So my recommendation, and I want you to continue to support my excitement, I thank you in advance for your support and your adoption of the recommended action. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ms. Adrienne Copeland to the podium.
Hey, I'm Adrienne Copeland. I'm here to talk about item number 22 on tonight's agenda, which is about the housing, demolition, and replacement program for Ms. Harper. While I commend everyone for coming up with a program to help this lady, I do, I do want to stress that this is setting a precedent of demolition that is not necessary. I have been in her house, and it's really, really not that bad. I am currently working on houses that are much worse, okay? And what we need to think about is like, as we said earlier in the committee, the whole meeting, 50% of our housing stock is over 50 years old. They all need work. And specifically in Ms. Harper's neighborhood and in a lot of other neighborhoods, they're not just 50 years old, they're 100 years old. And they all need a lot of work. All of those houses were built with galvanized plumbing pipes, which now look like clogged arteries. They all were built with knob and tube electrical wiring, which is a fire hazard, and they don't have, the fuse boxes aren't sufficient for the amperage needed today. And even the best, most expensive roofs put on then are due for, are due for replacement now. So if you take all of those, just those three items, every single house will be in that threshold of eligible for demolition, okay? And so what that means is that if you, if you think, yes, let's go ahead with demolishing these houses and then build a new one, you're condemning 50% of our housing stock to the landfill, okay? And more than that, I think we're missing an opportunity here, okay? We should allow these houses to be fixed up, okay? Just, and let's say, okay, Ms. Harper wants to stay in her neighborhood, that's great. Y'all, right next door, her house is 623, at 625 Branch Street, is a vacant lot. These owners are 10 years or more behind in city and county taxes, okay? You could foreclose on that lot, you could work it somehow where you don't have to put it back up for bid, but build her a house there, it's right next door, and then her property can either be sold to help cut costs, you don't, you don't have to pay the demolition costs of that house, and then someone who's crazy enough to fix it up, like me, you know, would, would fix it up. And then it's a win-win, okay? Because you save costs, and then that neighborhood is being built back. It's not just a one-for-one. So I think let's explore other opportunities instead of just tearing them down. Yes, she needs help. Yes, let's help her, but let's do it in a way that helps the whole neighborhood and not, not just her. There's other avenues here. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Troy Davis to the podium.
I'd like to tack on to what she just spoke about. I lived about a block from that house for 40 years on Buena Vista Avenue. My house was purchased in worst condition as that house on 623 Branch Street. We can remodel that house for about $65,000. We do not have to spend $145,000 or, or demolition of $10,000 or design fees of $11,500 on this particular house. We need to remodel that house and not remodel only Mrs. Harper's house or 623 Branch Street, but the entire Branch Street, Clark Street community needs help, and it needs help now. That's one item I'm going to speak on. That's item number 22. We do not need to, to continue to allow, to spend taxpayer dollars like it's our personal checkbook. Number 26, I'm going to say no to the community land trust. The community land trust is probably the worst decision that the city can make. I think we need to take a step back and look at it. I think that it's a horrible idea. It's, it's beyond me. Number 27, in regards to Water Group. I don't know if Water Group has all its ducks in a row, but we probably need to start looking for another developer. They haven't gotten their tax credits. I'm, I think as a citizen, I'm not willing to extend the contract to March 31st. We need to just look for another developer and try to find some market rate housing to incorporate some lower-income folks into that, such as I did on the Davis-Lawson Main Street. It also came to my attention this morning, I got an email from a guy by the name of Charles Lincolnson. I don't know who that is, but seems like a pretty tough guy. So I'm going to read it verbatim. RST is investigating Troy Davis's files in retaliation against him demanding her termination. You know she would do everything she can to make him pay she, before she is fired. So it's about to get very interesting. If you know anything, or you can prove the illegal construction jobs he has done, please speak up or get your info to her. He needs to be stopped as well. So nothing about my jobs are illegal. We know that this management has taken every extreme to retaliate against people in this administration. I would greatly appreciate that she be terminated from her position as a city manager of the City of Rocky Mount. Thanks.
I'd like to ask Mr. Bronson Williams to the podium.
I would say good evening to the council staff, mayor, etc. Tonight was the first time that WNCRTV carried a, the live committee as a whole meeting, thanks to the community advocacy and this council who invested additional dollars to increase its video capabilities. We was able to broadcast a portion of that meeting today. Many times, we think that people are just watching cable or they're on social media, but actually, there's a great percentage of our community who still watches television via broadcast spectrum. They have actually disconnected from the cable, basically said, unplug their TV, so just go unplug their cable and watch television over the air and get quite many of channels. And WNCRTV happens to be one of those channels. So we're, well, hopefully, we'll be able to continue to do that in the future, thanks to the investment this council has made for that purpose. As one said, I was very concerned about a permanent finance director for our community, one who would live in the city, who has, who will value the community, who will continue to harvest the, the true concerns of our financing, to be sure that we're always in compliance within the future audits. I think I came to this body before at one time about some issues on Tyann Street, about some trash that continues to be at a home, and it was addressed, you had a contractor that was going to do it, or what have you, and that matter is still yet there. So I'm not sure what code enforcement and the Development Services is doing with that particular piece of property, but, but that's in my, my neighborhood. The Rocky Mount Christmas Parade, a great event for sure. Many years of being a participant at the Rocky Mount Christmas Parade or a spectator. And one thing I wish that we could do is figure out how to coordinate with CXX and Amtrak to, to schedule the parade at a time at which the terrain is not stopping, or perhaps even look at a new location so that we can have a, a continued... or perhaps even look at a new location so that we can have a continuing flowing Christmas parade to keep that spirit of Christmas in the atmosphere. Lighting a lake, great event. To be able to see the horses and things out there again, I remember that as a, as a young man, working at, with the city of Rocky Mount, great to see that again. And the mayor was out there as well. Also want to say, we see the departure of our clerk, certainly Ms. Casey, we do have availability for you at WNCRTV. Think that we'll have you there. The Scoop with Pam Casey, I think it sounds like a great name. But certainly, I, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, Mr. Bronson. Can you give the address again of that house, the property?
I don't have that address right, right, but it's an 800 block of Tyne Street. It's, it's two doors down from 801. Yeah, so.
City managers, we could make sure we get that taken care of.
Okay, I'd like to ask Samuel Battle to the podium.
I agree, I agree everything Mr. Troy Davis said and the young lady said too. Had a call, I went by the house this weekend, about four of us. The house don't need to be towed down. You know, we got a couple of people saying $60,000, $40,000, the house can be remodeled. The bank, the city is not a bank for nobody. You can't use taxpayer money and throw it around like you want to do. You can't do that. If the lady need help, you know, we got to come up with another solution, but you got to think about the other houses around there, look like crap for real. Got about 10 houses out there, empty, don't do nothing with it. You got any time about tearing that down. Then you got a house around the corner for her, been like that for 22 years, you ain't talking about tearing that down. And you got Ms. Mary Warren's house, the blue house on the corner, been like that 15 years. You ain't done nothing to that. So at the end of the day, I don't mind helping my elders for nothing, you know? But the house can be renovated for $40,000, you trying to pay $160,000, that means we can renovate four houses in this community. Why one? What's so special with one house? And I'm asking the board to not approve this because we got other houses in Melter Brook, Harley Street areas, been down, looking like crap for the last 25 years. We need to go over there. Then you have drug activity going on in this house. You need to ask the police department, go over there and check it out. You know, you talking about renovating the house? And come on, it's crazy, you know? I don't know what y'all getting, coming up with this, but this Rocky Mount, I've been here for 40, 48 years, there ain't nothing I, I don't know about this city. I, I watched a lot of old people die in this city. I ain't just got here two years, I been here. You know, you got here two years, you don't know much as I know about this city. You know, this, this is history to me, it's personal. And I don't like nobody coming to this city and dictating that you ain't been here. You know, I'm, I might die here, my grandparents and everything. I take this very personally, throwing this money around. And Ashcombe County, over there by Hillsdale, Melter Brook, it's not getting no part of this, it fits in these houses up. And I feel like this is somebody doing this for election. Come on, man, wait till the election and do this. Help the person in the war. We got another person that's running this election. Don't do this right now, wait till after the election, then come with this. You know, I, I feel like somebody is promoting this to make their self look good while the race is about to start. No, man, don't do that right now, wait till next year to do this.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Brenda Cooper to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Brenda Cooper, I'm from the South Rocky Mount community. And as you know, I always come in something to help our community. This main thing we're looking at right now is stray dogs, again. I put a couple of calls into the police department about stray dogs running around in their neighborhood. They're beginning a little aggressive. There is a, in fact, I called last week about a dog that is dead in the warehouse fence behind my house. And there was another dog there, so it seemed to be guarding it. I don't know whether the, the dog is an offspring from that dog, but it's running buzzers away. Excuse me. Also, those dogs are running across our properties anytime, day and night, even this morning as I was over by the community center, about a pack. I see a pack because it's more than four, running back toward the warehouse area because they can get in that fence and they can hide out. And they're running around in our communities, even running down the street, they're everywhere. And people began to back off because they're, I mean, I don't want to walk up on a bunch of dogs. So those issues really need to be addressed quickly. The, another thing that I've been to the council about before is the lapidate properties in the area. And so that's still an issue, especially on the corner of Kingston and Church, South Church. And nothing's really been done to improve the look and condition of the warehouse on Church Street. And finally, the community landlords, the landlords, the slum lords, they're not considering the properties, they don't seem to care about the properties. And one particular property, and I mentioned, somebody mentioned about property, had, Bronson mentioned a property on this area. But I said good luck with that because as of yet, the property I've been talking about is still not cleaned. There's a motor sitting there, that's been sitting there for a long time in the front yard. And it's not like a long yard, very short stretch. So these issues, but these landlords just leaving properties anyway, has to be dealt with. It's not always demolishing, but it's just simply holding them accountable. And I feel like we need to push the issue. And when you tell me, oh, we got them on code, under code, that mean nothing to me when I see this being going on for years. Thank you. And the last thing I would like to mention, I don't know all the details and I'm still studying up on the land trust, but right now I'm not for it. Just thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Councilman Dossers.
Madam Manager, Ms. Cooper has come, I think it's at least her second time about stray dogs. Are we looking into that and do we have an update on that for, for her and others that have that issue? Because I know it is a issue we do have.
Right. I, I would have to, you know, turn it over to Chief Hassel because Animal Services is on the police department. So I'm pretty sure that they're very aggressively out there picking these stray animals up. Maybe the city just has a very high number of them all around the city, actually, I think I've heard, so.
I don't know specifically about this case, but I made a note for that, Ms. Cooper. I will personally look into it tomorrow and see what we can do about addressing those stray dogs and I think the issue with the warehouse and the animals over there. I'll look into it.
Especially the deceased one, I think she mentioned.
I'll take care of it first thing in the morning.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, sir. I'd like to ask Reverend Nehemiah Smith.
As our sesquicentennial year 150 draws to a close, Mount Zion First Baptist Church exemplifies why the church is still relevant and needed in the community. On behalf of Mount Zion First Baptist Church and its congregation, I would like to thank everyone who participated in making the second annual Feed the City a success. City Manager Small Tony, thank you for your continued support. Mayor Robinson, thank you for your volunteerism. It's definitely not beneath you to pass out water and meals to our citizens. Councilman Joyner, thank you for being there and helping in the effort to serve meals and pray with those who requested it. To our volunteers and community business partners, words are not enough to thank you for your hard work and dedication to this much-needed event. Lowe's, Sarah Lee, Hing Thai Restaurant, TriFaith Ministries, Greater Joy, Word Tabernacle, Revital Life of Greenville, Ann's Donuts Food Line, OIC, NAACP, JD's Grocery and Grill, Piggly Wiggly, GNS Express, March 1 and 2, Reesers of Halifax County, Chick-fil-A, The Bread Box, Canita Farms, Ms. Jessie Jones, Maness Motors. I would also like to thank the Rocky Mount Fire Department for coming out and doing their display for how to fry a turkey and to Sheriff Cleakerson and also to the Rocky Mount Police Department. Thank you all and God bless. This year's event accomplished a lot, but it also exposed that there is so much work left to do. And so we are looking forward to doing that work. Also, I would like to say to Ms. Casey, look forward to seeing you at WNCRTV for Scoop with Pam Casey. We're looking forward to that. And going to miss you, but happy trails to you. Also, I would like to say that perhaps in this housing thing, what we can do is, is that we can kind of help some students. You know, they have design departments at, I think, North Carolina State and at North Carolina A&amp;T, do a little contest. Whoever wins gets a scholarship and then that'll cut some costs. An architect can come along and say, okay, you know, can approve the, the blueprints. So there's, there's so many different ways that we can attack it and save money at the same time if that is the issue. But I'm sure that we have the intellectual currency to do so. And last but not least, I would like to say, for those of you who just came by and were able to, to see what the event was with Feed the City, next year, I know some rode by this year, so if you rode by next year, hopefully you're inspired to stop, get a meal, or at least volunteer. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Terrence McPhail to the podium.
Hey, how you doing, folks? Number eight, Alpha, the public hearing in reference to West Raleigh Boulevard, the zoning from RT, R10 to R6.
Are you here to speak for that or are you, because we're going to call that to be a public hearing and that'd be the best time for you to come.
That'll work. I have a seat. Thanks.
Okay, we'll ask Mo Deloche to the podium.
Just here first to invite everyone out. This Saturday, I'm doing the annual toy and coat drive. It'd be in, at the South Rocky Mount Community Center from 2:00 to 5:00. Be giving away free toys and free coats for the holiday. Also, the Christmas Parade, it was amazing. Thank you, guys. It just goes to show us how, you know, people will come out and support things that happen if we can do more things downtown. It was just amazing to see and, I don't know, I'm, I'm glad we had that thing put together. I also had a chance this weekend to go check out two events. One event was at the OIC, which was a gospel sing-off. And I also checked out the event at the Event Center, the concert, and they both was great events. And I think we need to do more events like this, you know, to provide more things for people to do in the city on, you know, the weekends. The city of Rocky Mount puts on so many nice events. And I think a big problem is just a lot of people, a lot of citizens just don't know about what's going on. I get it all the time when I'm asking people, hey, you going to check out this event, that event? And people just don't know. So I think the city should, you know, try to partner with some of these local promoters here in the city and see if they can help get the word out on some of these events. I'm, I'm pretty sure it'll help out on attendance and everything on a lot of these events that's going on in the city. And lastly, I wonder if we can check on getting a little bit more light in downtown. It's a lot of dark, dark, dark spots, especially in the alleys and stuff like that. And I mean, I'm just asking if we can get a little bit more lightening downtown and see if we can put pressure on some of these people that own these buildings. There's trees growing out of some of these buildings downtown and, you know, me, myself, I take it personal as in light because, you know, you trying to do things to bring life downtown and it's kind of tough, you know, to get people from out of town to come here because it really looks scary. You know, you see a tree growing up, growing out of buildings and you see, you know, stray animals running through and, you know, some, some homeless people might be walking through or something like that. So if we can get a better, you know, we can get something to, you know, try to holler at some of these people that own these buildings downtown and see if we can bring them up to par on our standards and how we want it in our city. Happy holidays to you guys and God bless.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ms. Mari Minjas to the podium.
Of course, I am the litter lady. I was just thinking, there was a lady that is a manager of a hotel, apartments, and she bought with her own money these signs that say stupid people litter. I think that's a great sign. Somehow one came onto my property, but that doesn't stop people from littering 301. But anyhow, could we have some money in the, some little drawer somewhere in the city that y'all could make or get people to, y'all foot the bill and then give some of these little slogan things put around the streets so maybe people stop to think? Of course, I'm still unhappy with the old Ebony Ivory place. I understood there was, they were trying to clean it up. Well, I hate to break it to them, but they ought to check it. Somebody is throwing mattresses over the fence. Now that surely makes it look so much better. But I would like y'all to all know, everybody in, in, anywhere, three and a half hours, this old bird went out there and I cleaned in front of my little frame shop on 301, North 301. Y'all run down there real quick because nobody threw anything out last night or today. Hallelujah. So I invite y'all to come see a clean part of 301. And on a little more serious note, that new law, and I forget what number it is, about elected officials, basically to be honest, now it's going to be a felony if you try to line your own pockets instead of helping the community for which you were elected. But it just embarrasses the heck out of me that we have a state law that was made because Rocky Mount got investigated.
We don't know that, Ms. Minjas. But go ahead, please.
But the lady from Nash County that represents us, she's the one that started it all. And it kind of happened after this investigation, so we don't know. But if that is true, that's kind of embarrassing. And I know we're, we possibly may not be the only people that have people that like to line their own pockets, but that is pretty sad. Thank you, have a Merry Christmas.
Okay, that concludes our public comment portion. Brings us on to item number 26 that we've removed, moved up, which is, second. Consideration of engaging a management team relative to the Community Land Trust and authorization to negotiate the service fees. The request is that we authorize the city manager to negotiate those service fees. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a, have a discussion on that. The Community Land Trust, I still think is, is new to us. What I'm really advocating, I'm saying it's not a bad idea, but as a council member, I would like more time to actually see how this Community Land Trust is going to work. 25% of a million dollars is 250,000. And I don't know, I've asked the city manager if she could tell us how much had been spent thus far on the consultant that's happened, that, that is helping to pull the information together, Mr. Johnson. I do want to know what has been paid as of now. And that amount, and then we're looking at what additional dollars is going to be paid, 250,000 of a million. And then we're looking at something about childcare. My previous statement that I hadn't had enough time to talk with stakeholders and we're not in the childcare business. And I'm not saying what the grant, the million dollars is supposed to be for childcare, but I do feel that if we have stakeholders here that are already in that field, you got Down East Partnership, you got other daycares, you have some other nonprofits that are doing work, that a meeting would be held to talk about how they can collaborate or how it's going to impact. You know, we went to Asheville, which we were beat up on. I was willing to take a beating to get the information on a housing bond. And when we built Bill Street Square- And when we built Bill Street Square, it took us five years to get five million dollars to build Bill Street Square. That was just a drop in the bucket. And we still haven't finished developing Happy Hill. We got Happy Hill is divided on both side of West Thomas Street. You have South Rocky Mount, Little Raleigh, Branch Clark Street around the Y. And to do eight denied houses is just a drop in the bucket. And I'd rather for us to focus on the housing bond, that we can build thousands and thousands of homes all over this ward. We have seven wards in this city. And just to piecemeal it, it's not gonna work. And that's the reason why the Citizens Academy was started, Sue had been working with her group and other groups. Because we really want to see this housing bond. We've been talking about it for the last seven or eight years. And just to move the community land trust up, spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to pay someone to run the community land trust. And we still haven't gotten the information on the housing bond. And I would just recommend that we table it until we get the information that we have been asking for. And that we pay the staff to bring the information that the community have been asking for. That all the studies that we have done about the fourteen underserved communities, bring that information to us. And if we want to bundle it together, fine, I'm not against the land trust. But this council did not direct us to do the land trust and not pursue the housing bond. It just doesn't make sense. And it's a good thing we have worked with Dr. Johnson. I know Mayor Protem has worked very diligent on that. But it's still a lot of things that's not, is unanswered. How the board is gonna be structured, how are we gonna appoint people on the board, how are we gonna work with our stakeholders? There's a lot of things that really needs to be put into place. You talk about the grant that's coming for childcare, a million dollars, is that gonna be something that's reoccurring? What if we don't get it the next year? Or we're gonna have to put a million dollars in it? And I'm not knocking it, but what I'm saying, we asked our manager and staff to prepare the housing bond information. And our citizens have been on their seat of anticipation to see what actually we're gonna do to make, to transform this city. We need housing. We need housing. And how you do community wealth, the first thing, people own their houses. They own their property. And so to me, I'm not knocking it, but I just don't think we are there yet. I'd rather see the information, I'm gonna shut up, on the housing bond and couple that perhaps with the community land trust. Because we got thousands of, you know, empty lot, you ride through Little Raleigh, tons of empty lots because we was aggressive on the demolition. South Rocky Mount, Home Street has totally been wiped out. Little Raleigh, around the Y, and you got gaps and gaps. And then that brings on stray dogs, weeds and grass. We really need to buckle down and get the housing bond. I'm very disappointed. I'm very disappointed. Very disappointed. Very disappointed. And because I think that's what we need. And that's what people across this state have been talking about, affordable housing. And I would like to have more time with it and to our city manager to please bring us the information that we've been asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Joyner?
Yes, I would like for the city manager to kind of go over what we've done with the land trust up to this point and some of the things that we have done.
Sure, be happy to. So I think I would go all the way back to the retreat when I and the staff presented your first Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. The community land trust, and one of the reasons for visiting Asheville was to actually find out more about that particular community land trust there. So the land trust is only one of several different vehicles that have been identified for the provision of more affordable housing stock in the community. From that retreat, of course, Dr. Johnson and his team even prior to that has started talking about the establishment of a community land trust here in Rocky Mount. The other piece of this, of course, is that when the A R P funds came to the city, the council did set aside funds for the community land trust. You actually set aside or reserved one million dollars of a three million dollar ass for affordable housing. So from that, it seemed to have been your interest to continue with researching and investigating the establishment of the land trust here in the city. What Dr. Johnson and Professor Bonds and that team has been able to do is to take that one million dollars that the council set aside for a community land trust. And they were able to go out and leverage that from another foundation to commit another million dollars. I think one of the unique programs associated with this community land trust in particular are two, well, actually, three different programs. One is the Trades Accelerator, where people are then trained to become entrepreneurs. They learn the skills of development, of construction, et cetera, et cetera. So that's an important piece of this. And it's already been mentioned, the Childcare Accelerator. And I think if you listen to some of the concerns that are present in our community, particularly at the industry level, where people are not able to continue with their employment because they have such childcare needs. So the positive about addressing that is that within the community land trust is a provision for childcare, for training, for wage acceleration. You might recall even in some of Dr. Johnson's presentations. And particularly now, since we have the ability to establish accessory dwellings, people can use this as an opportunity to build a small business right there on their property. So aside from that, there's also the issue of green school building initiative. Within our community, we have very aged, we have very aged facilities for schools. And so that was another focus, or is another focus, of the community land trust. The other thing I think that you brought up is, well, how is this structured? And in all of the presentations that have been provided thus far, the management team would establish a very small core group of people, primarily from the community, as well as one or two people from the banking and real estate areas of the city to make up the initial group that actually seeks the five oh one C three, establishes the bylaws for it. And then from there, it grows to something larger. The number that has been talked about is twenty-one, but you know, that might not be the number that the governing board would end up being. That's a decision that would be made internally within that. So one of the other issues I think to address in terms of the Management Services Contract, they're the ones who would actually help establish that group and guide them through that process. They would also be responsible for reporting back to the community on the progress. And it is a real partnership between a very independent group and the city. Now, I'm gonna try to connect the dots in terms of just housing needs within the city. So even in the preparation of the bond, what the staff has been working on, and we talked about this back at the retreat, that there are eight neighborhoods that have consistently appeared in at least two housing studies that have been done. I think one was in two thousand and seven and maybe one in two thousand and fifteen. So what the staff has been doing is we have been engaged with our bond council personnel. We have also been working as small groups, doing inventories within these different neighborhoods. Because we don't know exactly how much would be needed for a bond. We know that it is gonna be a sizable amount of money. I think the council has already been apprised of the city's financial capacity for a bond and what that could look like. So moving forward, there's a lot of work that's being done behind the curtain, so to speak, before we're in a position to really bring substantial information to you. I think we'll be able to do that in January, to come forward, to give you some idea, well, what does that really look like? What are the needs out here in these particular eight neighborhoods? So the contract with them, if it is approved, is to negotiate up to twenty-five percent. It's not exactly twenty-five percent. So, and I know what people are thinking, well, you know, they'll go to that highest ceiling, but that's not necessarily the case. Usually administrative service fees run anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent. So that is what we're proposing tonight, is asking for my ability to negotiate what that final amount might be for their services.
Councilman Blackwell?
Thank you. Got a question related to the, related to the community land trust. So are you saying that this action tonight extends your ability to continue funding this team? To refine the approach? Or are you saying this action tonight creates a new action to create the land trust and contract with this team?
So the ask tonight is for their Management Services Contract. And within that contract, they will be responsible for initiating that small group and guiding them through the process of creating the land trust. Remember, this is an independent group, a small group, who's responsible for seeking the five oh one C three, the bylaws, providing all the training for it. Also, finalizing the contract or the agreement that they have already out there for that one million dollars. So that would be part of their scope of services.
Go ahead. Please, yes.
So, so, thank you. So does that mean that their first contract has ended? And this establishes another opportunity?
Right, yes. Yeah, yes.
And so in the, you said in January, you'll be ready, your team will be ready to present to us the...
Next steps for the housing bond.
For the housing bond?
Yes.
Do we have any correlation and collaboration between those two activities? And are there funds that are either allocated from housing bond activities that the land trust will participate in or leverage? Or are there activities that will be coordinated with the Affordable Housing Bond activities?
Yes, there is a possibility that that could happen. Because what the city certainly doesn't want to become is a Realtor. So we want to be able to acquire these properties if we need to, whether it's by foreclosure or whatever it is, and then pass it on to another entity to develop, pretty much like we do with CDCs and CHODOs and other groups that we work with. But yes, there is a direct correlation. Because what we're gonna find is within just these eight neighborhoods. And it has been described, you know, over and over and over again, plenty of opportunity for redevelopment. So it's not just one particular vehicle for developing affordable housing. It's multiple vehicles. And so, yes, there is a correlation. At the end of the day, though, of course, is the complete restoration of these eight neighborhoods. And that will take a considerable amount of resources. I think if I remember correctly, when we met with the council in small group sessions, we looked at numbers that approached forty-seven million for a bond, all the way up to fifty-six million, to give you some idea of what the city's debt capacity would be and what the tax rate associated with issuing those bonds would be. So we feel pretty comfortable about the financial side of it because you want to know that. But you also want to understand, well, what are the needs? And so that is what the staff has been working on, is developing exactly what that inventory out there could look like.
So if I may just take a moment of executive privilege, so is the question that you're looking for the opportunity to negotiate a contract and then come back before this council for approval? Or is the request that you just be able to negotiate the contract and move forward? Because I think that's at the heart of a lot of the questions I'm hearing. And then Councilman Knight, I'll recognize you.
How much have been paid to the consultant?
Thus far.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. I think maybe Ken probably has a better handle of that.
I don't have an exact number, but I believe based on my recollection, it's in around sixty thousand dollars.
So I would be comfortable with coming back and saying, this is the negotiated price for this contract. And the reason being because I just think it would be a very wise and prudent thing to do. I think it would exceed, you know, my authority anyway. So I would come back. Yes, yes. And so that's what the whole point of the negotiation would be about. So what you're doing, what you would do is just authorize a limit of two hundred and fifty thousand in this case.
All right, Councilman Joyner, then I'll have Councilman Daltre. Okay, Councilman Daltre.
Well, just, you know, within the, our packet here says the team's gonna consist of Wendell Davis, Reginald Bonney, Dr. James Johnson, and Ginny Milliken Bonds. Is that correct? Well, three of, okay, three, three of, well, it was listed there. But, and you answered the question, you're basically gonna negotiate it and then you'll come back to council. And some of the stuff that my understanding of everything is that the secret of this five oh one C three is the ability to go out there and get grants. So we as a city, because we're limited what we can, we can put in for affordable housing or housing. And we don't have enough money to put into housing that's required that we need to, for affordable housing. So this would be a, they would work together, so to speak, if the bond... So this would be a, they would work together, so to speak, if the bond were approved. So, you know, I'm comfortable with moving forward with giving you the ability to negotiate. And I think it's probably prudent that we continue some of the small meetings because obviously there's still some questions. And, and I think it's also prudent to say that we have, we have a lot of land, maybe not necessarily that we have now, but some that we probably need to do stuff with because people aren't paying taxes. People are, the code enforcement needs to be enforced. And so not all of the land is going to either go into a, the land trust and/or for when a bond is done. Some of it we can put out there on the market so people who want to, to invest in Rocky Mount can do so. And I think that's an important thing that we need to remember. So, you know, I feel more comfortable now knowing it's negotiation. And if that's the case, then I put forth the motion that we agree to allow the city manager to negotiate up to 25% of the 1 million that we've got in our funding that we receive from the federal government.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so I have a motion and a second. I was going to ask the same clarification. Is that with the caveat, Councilman Daultrich, that we come back and vote on the final contract that's negotiated?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And that final contract will include the details of what we'll get for that money?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilman Knight, I think I stepped on you.
No, 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 I just wanted to know what we were voting on because it seemed as if, item number 26, is it 26, that, how it read that we were actually awarding the contract to Dr. Johnson to run the land trust. But it's giving you the ability...
To negotiate the contract.
The contract with whom?
With Dr. Johnson.
So we already hired Dr. Johnson?
No.
To be the...
Well, I would say that they certainly are the ones who have done a lot of the legwork here. And in order to move forward with this contract, to move forward with the establishing of the CLT, yes, most definitely. And plus, they have also gone out and secured an additional million dollars to support the effort. And to answer Mr. Daultrich's question, of course, foundations do not necessarily give to municipalities. So when they are independent entities, that increases our opportunity to leverage the city's investment in this. And we've already seen that happen 100%.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, and I'm going to come to you, Councilman Blackwell. A motion, just to clarify, because it gets a little confusing. Clarify, we have a motion on the floor to approve, to authorize city managers to negotiate the contract of the amount of a million dollar, up to 25% with the caveat and expectation that the contract will be brought forth here for final review and vote with a list of essentially what the services are, itemized list. And it's a second. Additional discussion, and I'll call on you, Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you. And I would also, clarity, if I can support this, I mean, I was the one who called for the concept, you know, to be explored and to be accelerated. And then during the presentation of information, I heard other things that were concerning to me, which some of them have been addressed, some of them have not. I know this is a, not an easy, clear path because the root causes are not easy and clear. So I do understand that. What I'm really not clear about, and I ask if we are going to have something come back to us, I'd like some clarity on how the city will be able to transfer property, I think we discussed this already, to a third-party not-for-profit without going through an upset bid process or give forgiveness on fees and taxes legally. And if we are separating ourselves completely from, legally, from this third-party not-for-profit entity that is created, that is not subordinated to the city of Rocky Mount, then how does that differ in content from any other not-for-profit entity that is involved in housing development? Are we looking at letting this be a template for us on how we work with other not-for-profit entities that are doing work in housing that have a, well, if you're non-for-profit, you should have a community good perspective. But how do we, is this going to be a singular entity in housing development for nonprofits that we will fund from the city? What are our returns that we're looking for? Is it going to be continuous? Or is this one-time funding for the setup, a seed effort, and then you're on your own? You know, so there's some, I mean, there, and we've discussed it, so this is new, not new to you, but it could be new to our public. And one of the things that I think our public deserves, and I'm really excited about the level of engagement that we have throughout our entire community around this issue, is that there are people out here who want to do more than what they're able to do now. And so Dr. Johnson did give us some hope that he had other resources to be able to invest in some other places. I think that's a good thing. But it's also unclear because there were, which we talked to Dr. Johnson directly, and, you know, you've got many people doing many things. I just want to know, in January, the main thing, some old preacher told me, the main thing is the main thing. The main thing is the affordable housing bond. And what I would like to know, Madam Manager, if we support this, are you saying in January we will receive detailed information about what this bond will include, the direction that we're going in, a timetable for it, and how it will interrelate with this community land trust?
Yes, yes, I will. And to go back, because you might recall, my response was that there is a piece of legislation that we're looking into. I think it's a bill that was put forward by Winston-Salem that helped to better define the opportunity so that this doesn't become the same old way of the city disposing of its property, real property. So we are looking at that as a way. But again, I would just underscore that one of the blessings of this is just having yet again another tool to use. It's not a one-size-fits-all. There are certain properties that it may not work for some of our other housing partners. So the more opportunities we have, more choices we have to take these properties and turn them back into something that's affordable, quality, safe, useful in the community, the better off we're going to be. So, yes, that is my intent in January to bring back to you what the affordable housing bond process would look like, what areas of the city within those eight neighborhoods, to give you some idea of what the condition, the inventory condition is. Now, in terms of the amount of funds that the council, and that's a council decision, that's not my decision to make, that you want to invest in affordable housing, I would have to leave that up to you. So you would need to be prepared to say that this bond then, given the information that we provide to you, that this bond needs to be at X level. I won't, I won't, I will not say to you it needs to be. And even in the illustrations or when we met in small groups, the intent even then was to show you, well, at a $47 million level, because that was the least that we could do without really pushing the city's debt capacity. Of course, at 56 million, it teetered over it a little bit. But those are the kinds of decisions, I think, that the council has to be prepared to make.
So we have a motion and a second. Need for additional discussion?
Well, just hearing that, and that it's the city manager going to bring all that information back, you've got a lot of work to do over Christmas, and...
We've been working on it.
I know, but delivery. And if you're going to bring an amount back, this just giving you authority to negotiate, and then you bring that amount back for this council to approve, I have no problem moving forward. But I would like to see those work in tandem together.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there need for additional discussion?
The vote, but I want, I do want to say something in this pertaining to housing. We have a, you want to carry the...
No, go right ahead.
Well, I just want to say that we see, we have seen a lot of activity in Rocky Mount, that houses has been boarded up 10, 15, 20 years. And when people begin, have begun to work on those properties, we are, I'm hearing people are getting stop work orders from our inspection department. To me, I would just be elated to see something that's been boarded up, just to see somebody take the boards off and fix the property up. I think that our management needs to talk with our inspection department. I'm not saying do something that's going to cause a public danger or safety issues, but just to stop people from beautifying and uplifting the community. If that's the case, and I'm not blaming them, you know, I think a discussion need to be had about that because if we're seeing boards come off and houses are being renovated, then I think that's, that's a good thing. That's a good thing. I just, I just want to say that.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries. That brings us to item number eight on our agenda, or I guess 8A, consideration of the minutes, recommendations from a planning board meeting, which was held November 9th of 2021. And so the request is for a public hearing relative to the following rezoning requests recommended for approval and found in compliance with the comprehensive plan by the planning board. That request by Barton Holm to rezone plus or minus 60.5 acres located within the 2700 block of West Raleigh Boulevard from R10 to R6. Care to speak to that, Mr. Deed?
Yeah, thank you. Ken just pulled up the map there. I know we have an individual here to speak on this, so I'll be very brief. It's property there, southeast corner of West Raleigh and South Wesleyan, to the south, B2, southeast, I2, industrial, R10. The request is R10 to R6, approved and recommended by the planning board here before you for a final decision tonight.
Great. Mr. McPhail, do you want to speak on this particular issue or is it another item?
This was the item, but I was just trying to get some information. I just reached the votes in this area.
Okay, well, please come speak. We'll give you the mic.
Yes, I just purchased property on Kinkin Drive, and I was just trying to get some information on what the R10, which is, I guess, medium density to a high density. So like, what's the plan on what they're going to build on the 60 acres?
Mr. Deed?
Yeah, of course. R10 to R6, currently R10 is about 4.3 units per acre. So proposed, it could go to a little bit more than that, 7.2 units per acre. We do not have a site plan or subdivision plan, but certainly we would review that in-house, make sure it meets all the criteria, and potentially some cross-connection access to, the streets are already there, to limit traffic out on West Raleigh Boulevard. So the proposal, the idea at this point, just a rezoning for that applicant. And again, we would review any plans that come through at that time.
Any questions? Okay, so the request is we acknowledge receipt of the planning board minutes, receive public comment, which we've done, and adopt the ordinance amending the land development code and map. And I believe that we still have a period of 24 hours after this to receive comment. Is that right?
Yeah.
And it's...
Just if there's a remote, like?
We don't have...
No, I think we can go ahead, can't we? Because we don't have anybody participating.
All right. So there we are. So I'll entertain a motion to, for item 1 through 3. Motion made by Councilman Joyner, second by Councilman Walker. Need for further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Rezoning is approved. Item 9 is a public hearing of the explanation of feasibility study relative to annexation number 324, 677, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just said, if you folks don't have a speaker, we would vote on the next one.
All right. So, public hearing, explanation of feasibility study relative to the annexation number 324 at 677 Fountain School Road, Ward 2, if approved. Requested action is that we have an explanation of the feasibility study by the city manager or designate knee, acknowledge receipt of the feasibility study, and adopt an ordinance extending the corporate limits. Do you please speak into the mic?
Gotcha. Thank you. 677 Fountain School Road, you've seen this one, this is the final step for your adoption, one parcel, half an acre of land, proposed use, single-family dwelling, and the zoning very low-density, R15. Water is available, currently connected, sewer is not.
Any questions? Hearing none, well, I'll entertain a motion that we, we've had the explanation that we acknowledge receipt. Motion made by Councilman Blackwell, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Need for further discussion?
One...
Yes, sir, Councilman.
It's down from the Old Fountain Correctional.
That is correct. And just to the east is Old Battleboro Road, if you're familiar.
Further on the...
Yep, yes, sir.
Near CSX.
Yes, sir.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Need for additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is a public hearing, an explanation of feasibility study relative to annexation number 325 on the Thomas A. Betts Parkway and Peel Road, Ward 7, if approved. Request an explanation of the feasibility study by the city manager or designate knee, acknowledge receipt of the feasibility study, and adopt ordinance extending the corporate limits.
Again, you've seen this before, Thomas Betts Parkway and Peel Road, 54 acres, cut in half by Thomas Betts Parkway, proposed light industrial use in the I-1 district. We don't see any issues here with the feasibility study and also recommend approval.
I have a question.
Councilperson Miller?
Has the lighting been studied in that area so that street lights are put in place just like they are in other areas of Tom Betts Freeway?
That's a good question. I'm not sure who would be the best to answer that question on staff.
Well, I believe that study was done internally with the previous section, so I think we have staff who can do that study. Otherwise, we bring in engineering, man. Just someone on staff can address that. I guess staff is waiting for the city manager to call on someone.
My name is Chris Special, Director of Energy Resources, and we can do that study internally.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Daultrich.
I think adding to Councilwoman Miller, I think it would be prudent to add the lights in that area to lighten that area along the Thomas Betts Highway because that is the main thoroughfare. And I think along with that, we've got some other areas around there, one coming off of that, but further down off of Fennel Road to Instrument Drive. No, it's not part of this, but it's what kind of came up during this rezoning here.
And it is a safety issue.
Well, can we, can we address all the lighting at the same time?
I don't think that's really actually part of the motion.
No, 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 but I'm just saying...
Absolutely, I think that's appropriate, absolutely.
Because it's lighting within inner-city neighborhoods that could also deter crime.
And we just need to talk about how we can do that, both end, you know. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the feasibility study and adopt the ordinance extending the corporate limits if the explanation of the feasibility study by our designate knee has been acceptable.
With the, the lighting study as a contingent on that, as a condition?
You want to make it a condition of that?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion now, as I understand it, is, let's see, to hear the study, acknowledge receipt of the feasibility study, adopt the ordinance extending the corporate limits contingent upon a lighting study?
Particularly.
All street lights.
Pardon?
Yeah.
All street, I mean, we've been complaining about the street lights.
We put it on the table and then just get it.
I think what we need to do is just adopt the annexation ordinance. If you want to come back later and address the lights, that could, that could be done.
So move.
Was the lighting study not done prior to the previous annexation only?
I don't know.
Can anybody speak to that?
Did we request one? Did we request one, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Are you saying, Chris, it was, Councilwoman Miller, I apologize. Are you saying that it was requested? A lighting study was requested earlier?
No.
Okay. So we are saying, we heard other, we heard comments from downtown. We've heard comments about lighting in inner city communities. I know we've encountered.
What I believe I've heard tonight is that everybody has said, we'd like to see a lighting study for the entirety of the corporate limits of City Rocky Mount.
Correct, which we've done three times past.
Sure.
That's right.
But, but I'm.
I don't think I'll still be on council when that happens.
I don't know. I don't know, they keep, they keep increasing and extending out the deadlines, you might. Okay, I have a motion on the floor with a second. Is there need for additional discussion? Without the lighting, correct. And then I think we'll come back for the lighting study request. Is there a need for additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I'm sorry? Nighting Joyner, yes. I'm just trying to put down lighting here. Okay, item number eleven is consideration of certification by the city clerk of the sufficiency of the following annexation petitions and scheduled public hearings, January tenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Annexation number three twenty-two, Old Spring Road subdivision, Williams lots four, non-contiguous. Annexation number three twenty-three, Old Spring Hope Road subdivision, Horton lots twenty, non-contiguous. Requested action is that we adopt resolutions of certificate of sufficiency of petition for annexation. It's been deemed sufficient. Adopt resolution scheduling public hearings for January tenth of two thousand and twenty-two and instruct the Department of Development Services to prepare feasibility studies.
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Daughtry. Seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item twelve is consideration of petition for annexation number three twenty-seven at forty-two ninety South Church Street, which is non-contiguous. Requested action is that we acknowledge receipt of this petition and adopt resolution ordering the city clerk to investigate sufficiency of this petition. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Daughtry. Seconded by Councilperson Miller. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's a little weak. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, ratification of temporary street closing request from the community action group to close five fifty-four Ambler Street. The corner of Branch and Ambler Streets from eleven thirty a.m. to two p.m. on Thursday, November twenty-fifth, for a day of giving. Correct address, date, and time of street closings previously approved on November sixteenth. Requested action is we ratify the approval of the street closing. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item fourteen is consideration of amendments to the following lease agreements. Lease with the Rocky Mount Chamber of Commerce for space, which is approximately fifty-two hundred square feet at the Helen P. Gay Historic Train Station. And the resolution authorizing amendment to lease with the Tar River Transit for space in rooms three fifteen, three sixteen, and three seventeen on the third floor of the Helen P. Gay Historic Train Station. Request is that we approve the amendments to the lease agreements, adopt the resolution, and authorize the mayor, city manager, and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city.
So move.
Motion made by Councilman Daughtry, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion?
Is this reduction? Is this reduction in the rental agreement, the lease? Because rates all over our city are going down, or rates inside, in downtown Rocky Mount are declining? It's possibly not office space.
I, I would have to probably agree with you that the rates are going down, you know. In the case of, certainly with the, the chamber, their issue is one of revenues.
Yeah, membership.
And, and, and membership declining as a result of the pandemic. So we're making the adjustment really to help them through this period of time. And I suspect that that's probably what's happening throughout the city.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item fifteen is consideration of recommendation for approval of the award of the duty side arm and badge to Sergeant John Tomlinson for thirty years of dedicated service. Retirement date is January first of two thousand and twenty-two. We're looking for a motion to approve award of the duty side arm and badge.
So move.
Uh, motion made by Councilman Daughtry, seconded by Councilperson Miller. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item sixteen is consideration of recommendation from the chief of police to declare surplus and retire K nine police dog, Cato, and award K nine Cato to Coal Mountain Animal Rescue, Inc. in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute twenty dash one eighty-seven point four A three.
So move.
Motion to second. Second from Councilman Daughtry. Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Item seventeen is consideration of resolution declaring official intent of the city to reimburse expenditures made for construction of certain improvements. And these are estimated at approximately three million five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Our request is that we adopt this resolution. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eighteen is consideration of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two installment financing contract with Bank of America Public Capital Corp. for equipment in the amount of three million one hundred ninety thousand dollars at a fixed interest rate of one point one seven oh five percent for a fifty-nine month term. The items and the amounts are listed below. Requested action is that we approve a resolution approving the proposal from Bank of America Public Capital Corporate to finance vehicles and equipment. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion made by Councilperson Miller, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Blackwell. Any additional need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nineteen is consideration of authorization to apply for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two assistance for firefighters grant. That is about nine hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars. Local match would equal ninety thousand three hundred twenty-four thousand and nine cents. Plan use is the replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus. Requested action is we authorize submission of the grant application by the staff, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any required documentation, certifications, and subsequent grant agreements on behalf of the city.
So move.
Motion made by Councilperson Miller, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for a second, additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item twenty is consideration of disposition of personal property consisting of five AP fifty self-contained breathing apparatus by private sale to Red Oak Fire, volunteer fire department. Requested action is we adopt the resolution declaring the property surplus and authorize disposal by private, by private sale.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Daughtry, seconded by Councilperson Miller. Is there a need for additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item twenty-one is consideration of the following water assessment contracts with James Hamilton Wood, Jr. and Carol Sue Wood for water service at sixteen oh one Deer Walk Drive. And a water assessment contract with Autry Thomas Nichols and Marion A. Nichols for water service at one thirty Cooley Road. Requested action is we approve these contracts and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joyner. Seconded by Councilman Daughtry. Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Okay. Item twenty-two is consideration of neighborhood revitalization program home replacement agreement with Ethel Harper. This outlines terms and conditions for demolition, design, construction, replace existing home with a new home of comparable size and layout, cost of one hundred sixty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Request is that we approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion.
And doing this, can Peter Varney extensively gone over this with us? And city manager, I know Ms. McGee is here tonight, can you? If she could just lay out what this process would been to.
Sure. I have a motion. Does anybody want to second that, or we want to entertain Mr. Varney? Mr. Varney?
Ms. McGee is here, but.
Okay.
So do you have a second?
I do not have a second, but I think if we could at least entertain an explanation, that would be beneficial.
Well, I think there's some questions, so that he can, it can be a second. There was some questions raised.
That's right.
In reference to.
We're all saying the same thing.
Yeah.
I was just asking for clarification. I didn't want to jump in front of process. So as Ms. McGee is coming forward, yes, this has been a project that has been before us for well over a year. It has been studied and evaluated extensively by our contractors. And in addition to that, this is a family that has a disabled individual. And so I think some of the issues about ADA accessibility also comes into play. So with that, I ask Ms. McGee to kind of walk you through what the process has been, what the challenges have been, and why we're at this point of saying that this is a house that needs to be demolished and rebuilt. So with that, Ms. McGee.
Okay, just to give you a little history, we've been working with Ms. Ethel Harper, who resides at six twenty-three Branch Street for a little over almost two years. The house was built in nineteen twenty. It's roughly one thousand one hundred seventy-seven square feet. The main concerns of the home include foundation, roof, plumbing, ceiling damage, electrical concerns, HVAC system. She's heating currently with a wood heater. Accessibility, as the city manager referenced, making the home ADA compliant. There is quite a bit of lead in the home. Matrix Health and Safety Consultant conducted a thorough lead inspection. The windows, the doors, interior doors, exterior doors in the home, the wood siding on the home. So there is a number of lead issues in the home. Of course, on top of that, some of the renovations what we're proposing would be to address the foundation, the windows, the siding, the roof, along with the plumbing, plumbing upgrade, electrical upgrade, HVAC system, installation of a HVAC system, making the home ADA compliant. This property has been bidded out three times as a rehab first. The lowest bid was one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. The highest bid was one hundred ninety-nine thousand eight ninety-two. As a result of the bids regarding just doing a full rehab on the home, it was determined then and recommended that we consider doing a new construction. Could be done at that same price or less. So then we moved forward with having plans done by Mr. Warren and to do it very similar to the home, existing home square footage. And so that is the reason why initially it was started as a rehab and now has moved to a new construction. The costs associated with it, we're estimating that a hundred and forty thousand dollars would, would be the cost for the new construction of the home. The design is fifteen thousand dollars. The survey, fifteen hundred. The demolition, ten thousand. And as I just mentioned earlier, new construction of one hundred and forty thousand. That's a total of one hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred. This project would be funded as a result of the housing replacement program. And it would be funded with part, would be funded through general funds and funded as a grant as well as a loan, a deferrable loan that would be forgiven over a ten-year period. We are also taking into consideration the value of the existing home before demolishing it. That value is building value, thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Land value, a little over five thousand dollars. So we estimated that to be twenty thousand dollars. How we make the determination, it's based off of the new construction of the home, which is a hundred and forty thousand. And then considering the twenty thousand for the existing value of the home, then brings it down to a hundred and twenty thousand. So we're looking at sixty thousand dollars as being part of the forgivable loan and sixty thousand in grants. And that amount that I just quoted you is specifically for the construction that we're anticipating spending with this project.
Question.
Any questions? Just, Councilman Knight?
So when will we roll out this for others in the city who would like to participate? Do you see if this council approved this project that we're gonna, I'm quite sure, get more and more calls? Are, are we gonna be able to do this?
Uh, yes. Overall, what we anticipate is that the Home Investment Partnership Program would be the program that we would actually refer residents so that they would be able to benefit from getting a new home or a replacement home. The home program, which is funded through federal funds, allows us to do home replacement. And so that would be the better option for us. But at this time, we're not able to use our home funds. And so that's why we came to council and asked for your support through general funds. So we anticipate that the home program could potentially benefit residents in receiving funds to assist with home replacement.
Well, Councilman Blackwell, then Councilperson Miller, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McGee. Thank you. Very thorough. We appreciate that history. I, I do have two concerns. First concern is the issue of precedence and replicability. You've spoken to the second one of those issues, which is because home isn't an option right now, it will be soon?
Yes, in two years.
In two years?
Yes, because we're in the process of reconciling our funds with the county. And as a result of that, we're having to reserve our Rocky Mount funds.
So in reserving those funds, we're unable to expend them for projects that it would normally, that that entity would normally cover?
Yes.
So. So now we're spending additional funding while we are reserving funding for activities that we normally would have done under a separate program?
Yes.
So then I do have a question about program efficacy, you know, as far as is this a one and done, or once we do this, we'll be doing this for two more years, and what are the prevailing conditions around that? So that citizens, I mean, we got some good feedback tonight, and we do not want to appear that some people get favors and other people don't. So how, how do we ensure that there is program adherence and compliance, and that this is the last option, number one? Number two, I am very concerned about a comment, and I don't know if it's been substantiated or not, about illegal drug activity and calls for service at that location. And has that been confirmed? And if it has been confirmed, what's our plan to ensure that that's not happening for a project that the city of Rocky Mount is participating in?
Okay. So we'll start with that last comment. For as with the present city programs, as well as this new program, the housing replacement program, currently, we do not request police reports for those programs. However, with the home program, that is, of course, through the Down East Home Consortium, does allow for us to, it's in the policy, to conduct police reports. So I guess if I'm hearing, if that's a request of council, then we can go back and do that. So that's the first answer, and regarding police reports, just presently in any city program, city housing program, we do not conduct a police report, but we do for the home consortium.
And so I just want to clarify that there is a difference between substance use and illicit activity.
Correct.
That promotes corruption in communities. Substance use is an issue that can be addressed with therapeutic applications, but activities that are detrimental to other people in other places around that location is what I would be more concerned and interested in. So that's where, that's where my concern is, since it's been levied in the public square, you know, I think that we are, that we have to make sure that we are protecting our communities and protecting the trust of the people whose funds we expand.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Miller, and then Councilman Joyner.
Well, I think I have one question, may I have a different question?
Is just the lady, Ms. Harper, the only one living in this house?
Ms. Harper lives in the home, as well as her disabled son.
Okay, and the reports that we hear, which may be just a rumor, is that drug activity supposed to be happening in that house or around that house, that neighborhood?
I think I would have to come back to you and gather that information and follow up and report that back as to the activities.
Councilman Joyner, then Councilman Daughtry.
Yes, we have worked in this area, and with the churches in this area, it's no secret that there has been and is substance abuse in this area. We have worked hard with Ms. Harper and her family in getting her son treatment, and I would try not to say as little about that as possible, because those are confidentiality. And Ms. McGee and, and office have worked with us to, to try to work as hard as we can in this area to address those issues. And I can say that the community, both faith-based and community, has worked extremely hard to make sure that we are trying to make this a safe, livable community like we would everywhere else in Rocky Mount.
Councilman Daughtry. Councilwoman Knight.
Well, I think my question comes really to the manager. Tonight, we heard from the public, specifically from Ms. Copeland, I think an innovative alternative, if truly what has been said is next door on the corner, I believe, if there's, there's property there that taxes haven't been paid, and then we have a house next door, I mean, and I'm hearing from another, we heard tonight, that, you know, they questioned the pricing, could we, what, what would be the timeline if we looked at the property next door to build new over there, possibly renovate the current property? I don't know, but it seems innovative to me, and it, and it adds to the value within that community. It's, you know, helping Ms. Harper out and keeps, keeps she and her family within that And I, I think I share the concerns what I hear from Councilperson Blackwell about the activity, but I did, we're hearing some innovative stuff, and I'm just wondering, are we being, are we looking at various ways? Are we working with our, with some of the folks who are experts in, in this field that are, or maybe can come up with some alternative ways that would save these neighborhoods and save the city money and the people money?
Well, I, I think I would go back to Ms. McGee's earlier timeline, where this project had been bidded out three different times earlier.
Yes.
With the intent to rehab what was there. Would you mind sharing that information again, because the prices for that was extremely high? So, but then to go to the second part of this, in order to, the city doesn't own the property next door, nor does Ms. Harper. So we would have to go through a process of acquisition if the person who owns the house next, or the property next door, will be willing to sell it. So that's a whole process. So you're talking about extending a timeline here to be able to take care of this particular issue. It's been, what, two, two years now?
That we've been working with the family.
Yes, and so she's currently living somewhere else.
She's currently living in Edgecombe Meadows, and she's been there since November of twenty twenty. So a year's coming up, or years here.
Yeah, Councilwoman Knight, then Councilman Daughtry.
Was a follow-up.
Yeah, that's fine, sure.
So the, the property, I understand, next door, if property, if taxes are owed, and we've got a lot of property within this community where taxes are owed, and that, and it's hurting the, the citizens who are paying property taxes, this is where I've struggled, because to me, we need to go through foreclosure, whatever we need to do, get that, get that property, put it out there, so we can make money, tax revenue off of it. And, and so, we might not be able to do it for this situation, but I, I think we, I've, just, just tonight, in the three minutes someone has to speak, we've heard something innovative there, and I think that we ought to explore that. Heck, let's bring some, some folks in and talk with them about some innovative things that, in addition to what we're doing, but it could save the city money and save, and save these communities.
Yeah, so we have talked about, about that, you know, being a bit more aggressive about foreclosing on property, but again, while it is innovative, it is, it is time, and it's, it's also money, so. But for this particular situation, I think what, what led us down this path, several things, the safety of that family, when you, and I, and I know that this, this situation is, is common in certain neighborhoods, no, no question about that. But for me, it was the safety of the family living there, when you have electrical cords and you've got, you know, wood stoves and, and things of that nature, plus an elderly person, plus someone who is disabled, you know, you, you really have to try to move as quickly as you can. Unfortunately, quick here has taken us quite a while because we didn't have the policy in place, which the council thankfully approved most recently to allow us to do this kind of work. No doubt that there are other situations out there. I think for me, the, the triggers are going to be along the lines of safety, elderly people in particular, and disabled. So when you hear about those kinds of conditions, and even children, I would certainly add children in that.
Councilwoman Knight?
Just listening to all of this, I, I really feel for the person, that we are putting all this business out in the public square. We should have vetted it if that was a component of the home funds, and to just discuss this, I mean, if it was me, I would be, I would feel some kind of way. If that was an issue, that should have been handled before it came to us. And, you know, we trying to help, but then you discussing this stuff, that's, I, I don't think is appropriate. And it's, you know, a little embarrassing to me that we discussing the woman's business and people, you know, I just feel some kind of way. But I don't know how we're gonna fix it, do we go back and vet it and then bring it back? Because if we don't, and it continues, then we are building up, somebody just sent me a message, a trap house, and we don't want to do that. Well, that's what they said. But to me, to discuss this like this, it's not fair to her. And it should have been, all that stuff should have been vetted, that's all I want to say.
Okay, any, any other questions? Yes, sir, Councilman Walker.
I just, have we made a motion yet?
We have a motion, I don't have a second, though.
Okay. Second, and I also would like to say that with all of the conversation that we heard around housing tonight, we'd just like to see this council continue to work on creating a holistic plan of how we put everything together that we went to Asheville to see. We've been talking, Councilwoman Blackwell said earlier how we've been waiting for housing bond for years, and I think we're just to the point where we, we can't continue to keep talking about, you know, this and then that. These issues are what's causing us to keep talking, we're gonna keep hearing it, we're gonna have someone come next, between next meetings, saying, hey, listen, can, can my house get fixed? We're gonna get these calls. What I would like to see us do is have a comprehensive plan of how we're gonna address housing as a whole, affordable housing, low-income housing, market rate housing, housing in general for this whole city. Create a plan and execute a plan. Thank you.
As Councilmember to amend the motion, that I don't, I don't have a problem with supporting it, but at least vet that part, and then, you know, maybe put it back on the agenda, because I think we got some unreadiness with that.
Councilman Joyner, you made the motion, are you willing to change it?
What are we vetting?
It's up to you. Well, the, the current motion is that we approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the city, which is basically the plan that we're talking about, tear down the house and rebuild it for a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. So we got a motion, we got a second. Request is that we modify the motion, so I'm asking the councilman who, who made the motion to, if, if he so chooses to do it, or we vote this up or down?
I'd rather that we voted up or down.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, for not to help, but I am voting that this should have been a better process.
All right, excuse me, sir, you're disruptive.
You know, if it's a part of the consortium, the housing consortium that, that is vetted, then I think we should do our duty and to vet it as well. We don't want to set that type of reputation, because you can, you can help and then hurt as well. So that's why I asked if the motion could have been amended to give you more time and the staff to vet what was said in the public square, and then come back with that information. I would have felt better, better about it. That's just me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Knight. Motion carries. Brings us to item number twenty-three, which is the election of the mayor pro temp. I guess at this point, I'll open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Daughtry.
I would like to nominate Councilman TJ Walker as mayor pro temp.
Second motion.
Have a motion and a second to, I guess, elect TJ Walker to the office of mayor pro temp. Is there a need for discussion? Councilperson Miller.
Councilmember Walker, can we expect that you will be in council meetings regularly, on time?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Congratulations, Councilman Walker. All right, number twenty-four is the election of a city treasurer, it's two-year term, expires December of twenty twenty-three. All right, I have a, I guess a nomination for Councilman Daughtry, is that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Yes, is there a second? Councilman, was that Walker? Okay. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, congratulations, Councilman Daughtry. Are there any individuals to be appointed tonight in any of the?
Another thing, we didn't get an answer on.
What was the answer, what was the question?
COVID paid for those who retired before the decision to make, we suppose they got a number.
Yeah. Can, can we add that to the end of the meeting? We've got several other items here. No, no, we're, we're at appointments, that's item twenty-five. Does anybody have, yeah, we've still got two more. Do we, do we have any appointments that need to be made? By the way, we have person, our forms, personal history forms on the table, if anybody here is interested in serving on any of the committees, if you can pick one of those up, complete it and get it to the city clerk's office. Is there any, any nominations for our office? If not, I'll just inform you, the housing authority, I have one appointment, and I'm appointing Tarek Pittman to that position, and just let everybody know. Item number twenty-six, we have handled. Item number twenty-seven is consideration of an option to purchase unapproved real estate addendum with five points crossing limited partnership relative to the Tarboro Street development. Request is that we approve the amendment to option the purchase and authorize the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
Same move.
Motion made by Councilman Blackwell, is that a second from you, Councilman Knight? Is there a need for discussion?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you. Can, Ms. Manager, can you give us just sort of a thumbnail sketch of what the delay is and where we are? There was another comment made earlier about tax credits and all of that.
Sure, I think Mr. Blackburn, is he still, is he still on?
I, I, I am, Madam City Manager.
Okay. All right. Mr. Blackburn?
May, may, may I speak, Madam City Manager?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, yes, this is Dennis Blackburn with Woda Cooper Companies, and I, I did hear this evening that somebody did mention that Woda Cooper had not been allocated the credit, that the tax credits for this particular development, and that is not the case. This development, about nine point three million dollars, is receiving funds from two main funding source. One is the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, who have allocated the, the tax credits to us, and the other is from ENCORE, which is the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, and they too have reached an intergovernmental agreement with NCHFA to award us just under four point eight million dollars. As part of their funding structure, they need to go through a HUD environmental clearance process, and that is what we're at the end of, and that process is going to bring us into the beginning of next year. at the end of. And that process is going to bring us into the beginning of next year. We expect it to be completed by February, which is why we're asking for the, just the extension of the actual purchase agreement until March the thirty-first. We do intend to have all the closing done and to actually to start in March with the actual construction. We've probably spent today about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Architectural plans, civil survey, market study appraisal, et cetera, has been done, as well as the environmental, which we're in the process of completing, which is why we're requesting this extension.
Okay. Any additional questions? Hearing none. We do have a motion on the floor with a second. Is there a need for additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Extension is granted. And we have two other items that have come up during the conversation. One, Councilwoman Miller, regarding a light assessment, would you like to award a motion to that effect?
The item that I mentioned was the petition that was presented.
It's also to do a survey regarding, an assessment and see the corporate limits regarding streetlights.
You're talking about the annexation, that piece?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we wanted then a separate motion?
And then Councilman Knight, and I believe others, had mentioned that they would like an assessment for the entirety of town, so.
I'll have to remember that technique, you know. Once something's brought up many wards, you just make it citywide, and we get all our needs taken care of, right?
That's why we're all elected from across the city.
Thank you. So then, yes, I would like a study done of the lighting in the area that has been approved for annexation. We have authorized an annexation study to be done. I had simply asked that the lighting there be included in the study that was to be done, the annexation study. So I make this motion. Thank you.
Do you mind repeating the motion? I'm just a little confused. I can normally keep up.
I was asked about the lighting in the area to be annexed, and I was asking, and I will make this a motion if necessary, that the study of the lighting, the study of the lighting be included in the annexation study that is done in any area that we're going to annex. You know, we look at the cost and so forth, and the revenue coming from the area.
I don't know.
Do you still have questions?
I do not have, well, I think that we can probably handle accommodate that without a motion, but I think that there was a question about the entire city. So I think we got you what you want, Councilperson Miller. And now, in terms of the rest of the city, is there a need for a motion for that?
I think so.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that entire city lighting be evaluated.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a need for discussion?
Oh, well, I will make one comment. When I have asked for lighting studies in the past, it's taken a while to get it. And if we're talking about the entire city being studied, then maybe we're gonna have to prioritize it by neighborhood or by area, or by degree of the darkness in that area, whatever would be appropriate.
And clarification, please.
Please, what's your, Councilman Doltrich?
Internally. We're not getting some, paying someone to come in here and do this.
Right.
If you're speaking of a study all over the city, and I think one of the things that just came to my mind would be looking at ward by ward where the dark areas are, starting there first. And perhaps if there are particular areas within your respective wards, if you could just let us know, and we'll start there where the greatest need is, and then kind of build out from there. I think that would be a little quicker.
This would be done internally?
Internally.
With a consultant. Okay.
And this is different from the need to trim back trees where their blocking lights is. This is areas where there simply need to be new lights installed.
Right. So again, I think started with the areas that are the darkest, and then determining, you know, what is needed to brighten it up, whether it's trimming back trees, or installing new lights, or whatever.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We've had clarifying questions. Is there a need for any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. And Councilman Knight, I believe you had something that you wanted to?
Get up on the, for those who retired before the allocation of the COVID pay, do we have that? And what is the council's pleasure in awarding those employees who worked during the pandemic and that risked their lives as well?
Yeah. So I'll ask Ms. Colfield Jones to come forward, give you an update on that.
Good evening. We have approximately thirty-three retirees that would receive the COVID pay, some that worked full-time during that time period, and also some that were rotation. So there's a combination of both the seven hundred and the twelve hundred.
I think we should reward those or pay those who worked during the pandemic. So I would like to make a motion that we pay those thirty-three people the COVID pay out of the general fund. And I don't know what that amount is, but we got plenty of money. This was somebody to say. But I really, you know, honestly, they worked during the pandemic, they did risk their lives, and we should compensate them.
Second.
I have a motion and have a second. Motion made by Councilman Knight, second by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion? Councilman Joiner?
So.
Councilman Doltrich?
So it could be up to forty thousand dollars, if my math is correct. Thirty-three times twelve hundred?
All of them do not work full-time. Some would get seven hundred, some would get twelve hundred. So it is going to be less than that.
I agree. I just want to quantify. It could be up to.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Any need for additional questions and/or clarifying? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel matters. Is there a second?